All set, Mr. President?
Is everybody ready? Special meeting, North Smithville Town Council, June 29th, 2021. Excuse me?
It is the 28th.
I don't remember if it says 28th, okay.
You have two.
Oh, thank you. Because I'm just reading as I go. So, yeah, all right, June 28th, 2021. A matter of clerks, will you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
Lord, assist with my Holy Spirit of council, all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Present.
Mr. Vadnez?
Here.
Mr. Biragad?
Here.
Okay, so tonight, for those people that are zooming in on us right now, there will be no open forum tonight. If you have anything that you want to discuss with the council, an open forum will take place at the very next council meeting, at the very next regular meeting. Also, public comment on the budget is now closed. We had two public meetings, and tonight, we are just going to discuss the budget. However, the public comment at this point is now closed. Discussion by council, vote of action on adoption of 2021-2022 proposed budget. So this is what I'm thinking. And I'm open to suggestions by any of my council members, or the administrator, or anybody. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to read off each tender. Oh, yes. All right, but I have an old... I seem to have a wrong agenda. But anyway, let me continue as to what I was saying, then we'll backtrack a little bit. So I'm going to read off the... I'm going to read off the department that we're going to discuss. At that time, we will... Can you hear me? All right, so at that time, then, we will go... We'll present the Budget Committee's recommendation. So just for an example, for the town council, we would present the Budget Committee's recommendation. This is per the chart. That they... It's the Budget Committee's recommendation we're going to go off. And then, at that point, we can make adjustments. A council member could say that they want to make a motion to change something. They want to make a motion to adopt the administrative's budget, or they want to add anything or subtract anything. And which time, we will do that, and then we will make a final vote on the new number that we come up with for that category. As we go along, if anybody has any suggestions or you want to change things, to make this a more efficient process, I am all ears. So, all right, so now let me backtrack. I now have the right agenda. So we're going to back up a little bit to old business. Discussion by council, vote of other action on proposed amendment on code of ordinances, section 6-4, purchasing and competitive bid procedure. This is the second reading. We actually... Technically, it's actually a third reading, but this is the second. Officially, this is the second reading. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions that they would like to make at this time?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the second reading, an ordinance to amend section 6-4, code of ordinances, chapter 6, article 1, purchasing and competitive bidding procedure.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Now, we're going to move on to the budget. Discussion by council, vote of other action on adoption of 2021-2022 proposed budget. And as I said, so the way we're going to start is we're going to begin right at the very top. Town council, the Budget Committee's proposed budget of $45,863.92.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total town council budget of $45,863.92.
Second.
We have a second for that, for the Budget Committee's number of $45,863.92. Is there any discussion? Anybody like to make any changes or additions to this? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Prove a court. The Budget Committee's recommendation is $8,169.68. And that is exactly the administrative's recommendation as well.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve town administrator's budget request, also the Budget Committee's budget request of $8,169.68 for the total probe court.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to legal now, total legal.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total legal in the amount of $186,659.40.
Second with discussion.
We have a second with discussion. Ms. House?
Just a question for the finance director. We have, in legal reserves, we have a total of $65,396.32 sitting there, and it's labeled 2017 extraordinary litigation and 2019 extraordinary litigation. I was just wondering if we had anything earmarked for those funds, and if not, that we could reduce this line by about a month.
Council Vice President, Ms. House? No, you do not have that earmarked for anything in particular. At one time, it was earmarked, but those litigations have been filed. So yes, we can use that for this year's budget.
So what was the total that we have in reserves?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. $65,396.32. So I would ask that we consider reducing the professional services litigation, extraordinary litigation by that amount in the issue's budget.
If I can add to that, how much did we use? Because right now, there's $90,000 being allocated for extraordinary litigation. How much have we used of that? I mean, obviously, we have leftover from previous years. How much have we used this past year?
From reserves? From the regular budget?
Just how much was... How much from the regular budget last year? I don't think we even went to the $90,000, right?
No.
It was above $65,000, if we spent this year, I believe.
That's what we already...
Well, because, yeah, we look at the three-year. As of March 31st, we only expended $14,380 of a total of $40,000.
Oh, okay, so we do litigation?
Yeah.
So do we really need $90,000? Then we can always, you know... Maybe we can go down to 65 or 60?
I would say just...
Yeah, just give the amount.
She suggested it go down to 25 and keep the 65 in reserve and leave it there for extraordinary litigation.
Well, I think, in the budget, I would have it down to zero because we have 65. No, we have the 65 in reserve. So then they would give us $90,000 to play with somewhere else if we need to.
So use the money that you found with the... Yes?
We have Council 94's contract coming up for negotiations, and we also have the police. So we've got to meet a little bit of...
So we might have, right now, as we stand, we could possibly have $26,000...
To reserve.
$20,000 for this year. And we have 65, so that would give us $85,000, right? I mean, $85,000. I would... I would be prospecting about not even funding that line because it's out of the reserves, but...
So by not funding it, then we would have the 65, the $65,000?
And then whatever remaining from this year. I mean, so far, as of March 31st, we only spent $14,380. So...
You say that's in reserves? Can you...
The $65,000.
In reserve? So what do we mean by reserve? Is it in the... It's in the... It's in our general fund, unexpended? Or is it covered in our general fund?
It's neither. It's actually on a separate account, in a separate line income. What happened was when we were negotiating with police and councilmen for the last two years, we reserved this one of the keys. We had to hire attorneys. And we didn't spend as much as we predicted, so that just...
So there's still... There's still in reserve in this line, then?
Yes.
Mr. President, just a little case we're getting just caught up in the summation here. So for the 2017, with extraordinary litigation, was $32,617 that we had in reserve. And then, the year 2019, was $32,778, as the Council of House pointed out. So the total is, Councilor House, obviously, is part of this just amount now, but was aware of this, $65,391. Which brings it back full circle. Do we really need the $90,000 in extraordinary litigation? No, but in preparation for contractual with local 94 and also police fund, we should keep a certain amount of money in that, $67,000. Remember that $65,391 of it would be from what we already have on reserves. So if you want to just put an extra $5 into that, you could drop that $90,000 down to $5,000. We take that and transfer it to $5. I think it'd be a big win. Thank you, Councilor House, for pointing that out.
That's my suggestion, so that we don't have a motion.
I agree.
If anyone wants to recall it.
I agree with that. So then that line, then, would just be down to $5,000 for extraordinary litigation? Who made the motion for...
Well...
I did.
So what, do we amend? I look at it, you could make a motion to change that number, and then I would amend the main, the main motion if the motion passes.
Right, so Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the previous motion to have total legal in the amount of $186,659.40 and reduce the professional services legal line and reduce that by $85,000 to have a total of only $5,000 in that line. So therefore, the total budget for that, for legal, would be $101,659.40.
Okay, and that is an amendment. Is there a second?
Well, we're going to vote on the reducing that line down to $5,000. She made a motion.
She made a motion.
She made a motion, I'll second that.
Yep.
So now we vote on that.
Okay, so now we're voting on the change that Ms. House made. Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
And then I will amend the motion to the total legal to be $101,659.40.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, the second has to amend this. I amended that in your original motion. Who made the second?
I did. I amended my second.
You amend the second. And then we... And you can do roll call now.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Seems like there would be a quicker way to do that, but... All right. Moving on to municipal court. The Budget Committee recognized $48,762.41.
Mr. President, I make a motion to no municipal court be $48,762.41.
That's a motion. Do we have a second? I have a second. Any discussion, any changes, anybody who would like to make? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. President, just a question.
Yep.
In the past, I think I recall that when we did the budget, we could go with the different ones and see who wanted to go. Is that how we can do it now? So we're not doing back and forth?
Yeah, it seems to be a little confusing, though, doesn't it?
Is that...
What do you mean?
I think before, in the past, we've done... Someone can approve, like you can make a motion that I approved the town administrator budget for $48,762. And then someone else may have another motion, and then sit, and then we see if it falls or it fails. And I mean, fail or...
So by chart, we have to act on the Budget Committee's number? By chart?
That's what David Reo was indicating also, that we have the...
We can... That's why I say we make a motion on that number, and we can make any amendments that we want to, but this... But we need to act on the Budget Committee.
We have to vote on it, and then amend it, and then vote?
Well, we make a motion and then cite it, and then in the discussion, we can go back where we just did, and we can amend. The maker of the motion can amend it.
You agree with that? That's pretty much what we discussed earlier.
Yes. Mr. President, I find several of the parts you'll see that cost of the budget committee, the county administrator budgets are exactly to the penny. Currently, you may say, as presented, the TA's presented budget proposed and the budget committees. But the budget committee in this particular instance takes precedent. But if they're the same, yes, unless somebody wants to make an amendment. Because you may have three or four lines, and it's different between the budget committee and the TA, and that's what you get in the discussion. And putting it up for a vote.
Okay. Is it yours that...
Mr. President, I... There was a couple of line amendments of health insurance and dental and life that, after the fact, I discovered people either changed from being late to single. We have one new hire that didn't take any insurance at all. When we get to those, they're in yellow, get on the town council. I didn't want to change anybody else's budget, just yours. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yellow, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not...
Right. Like, I'll see it. Because you don't have the town council. I'll show you an example, like these, right here, tax assessor. There's one particular person that was hired. We had put that person in a standby. Come to find out, they don't need insurance at all with us. So I reduced it. So I just want to make note of that in case... And then the life insurance went up by 3%, but I think still was up some. So once we get to those levels, I just want to make sure you all understand that those are changes that were beyond my control that were just facts after I already... We already did the budget with the budget committee.
Interesting.
Right?
Some of these numbers changed this recently, it's Friday, so that's why.
I understand. Okay. But when we get there, if you can just feel free to speak up, okay? Okay, then we'll move on to total administration. We have discrepancy in the town administrator and the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee is $209,560.70.
Mr. President, I make a motion for total administration. I think it's... Actually, I should say total administrator. Administrator's office. It's $209,560.70.
Can I... I'm sorry. I forgot to put that in yellow. There's a change.
Okay, we can amend that, though.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, where are we, now? So what do we got to change on that, Cynthia?
The life insurance. The life insurance should be at 35.20. So it makes the new total of $209,569.70.
Give me that number, and that was for the Budget Committee number, right?
No, that's for the town council.
We can give you a number, yes?
I know. But I changed the life insurance to make it correct.
Oh, okay.
Because the life insurance went up 3%, 3.6%.
You're saying we're adding $9 to the budget committee?
All right, so the new number, that will be $218,560... No?
$218,000.
Or change $9? Oh, $9? Just $9?
Okay. Thank you. That was a big difference.
All right, so do we need to amend the motion now? Do we need to amend the motion?
We get a second on it.
Oh, it's that one?
I think... I think we need to pause here.
Yeah.
So we're all the same, together in the midst. It doesn't have to be my way. We can just... We need to hold on to Budget Committee's numbers. I know that Cynthia has up-to-date numbers, which is great, because then we're going to have accurate numbers. I look at that as if you make the motion on what we have for a number, and then we amend it.
Can you second?
We can amend it. Any new numbers that she has, we amend the discussion part of it.
Okay. I think we can move along a little quicker.
Yeah, we'll move quick, yeah.
Right, but I think we can move it even a little quicker than that. I think what we should do, then, is when we come... And we're early on enough that we can do this. When we get to, say, total administration, we can say the $209,000, we can have discussion. And then, when we come to the number, then we can make the motion. So it's... So we're not constantly going back and forth and amending motions and doing all that. So, for instance, if somebody wants to make a change to $209,000, we discuss that, and then we come up with the final number, and we go on.
So we're going to do a motion in a second to talk about it?
We need to get to the concussion first. Well, yeah, I mean, it can drag, but there's not a lot of...
Yeah. Okay, I'm just remembering how we've done it in the past. But all right, we'll do it that way.
Yeah, I'll second your motion.
And then on the discussion, Cynthia, are there any other changes to that, to the administrative department, just that $1,000?
Yeah.
So I'll amend my motion, then. It'd be $209,569.70.
I'll amend my second.
Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
So now, is there a motion to approve? A little bit of a motion to approve the $209,569?
We just did. You just made the amendment. No. This is getting... We amended the main motion, that $1,000 into it.
He did. He did, right? That was correct, because you guys both amended at the same...
Okay. All right.
You changed the amount of dollars when you did it.
Okay, so...
Instead of withdrawing, he amended.
I got you. Thank you. And now we get a vote. Roll call, please.
No.
You just did.
We just did.
Well, that's right.
So instead of Paul going back and taking his motion off the table, he just amended the original motion to the correct one.
Okay.
Him did also. So we're clear on that one. We're all learning together.
All right. Town Clerk's office. If you look at the Budget Committee and the Administrator has the same number, at $263,487.70.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Budget Committee's recommendation of $263,487.70 for the town clerk's office.
Second. Wait, a second. The discussion?
Life insurance changed to $1,252.80, making a new total of $263,529.16.
Can you repeat that life insurance question?
Sure.
Life insurance changed to $1,252.80. And the total for town clerk department is $263,529.16.
Isn't it only by two... Can you go back? Isn't that $12,288?
Mm-hmm. Well, you can ask the little number.
Town clerk as well. Oh, I'm sorry, carver. Okay, no worries. All right.
So now we're going to amend the main motion if you want to change that number.
I'll amend my motion to make the town clerk budget $16.
Second, second amendment. Second amendment. Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Getting easier. Planning. Currently, the Budget Committee is $219,472.82, which reflects the town administrator's budget as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion for total weighing made $218,472.82.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Wait. There's a change on life insurance?
Yes.
Life insurance changed to every...
Every.
They have life insurance for that.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Should I say if... I don't know what to say.
Say it right away. And then discussion. I looked at you.
Well, after you...
Yeah, after. Right after, when I say discussion.
Okay.
So what's the new number?
$835.26.
That's what I added?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. That's the new number for life insurance. The new total for planning department is $219,435.42.
If we spend it, I'm going to amend your motion. I'm going to amend the main motion. It'd be $219,435.42.
And then my second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Board of canvases. The Budget Committee is $21,019.45, which also reflects the administrative budget. We have a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion, total board of canvases would be $21,019.45.
Second with discussion.
Wait, a second. The discussion is out.
Cynthia, also, this one, I have a question, too. We have, in the 2018 election expense reserve, we have $5,911.10. Do you know if that's being here, watch for amendment?
For the...
Redistrict?
We...
Redistricting.
I can't say it. Yes, it's going to cost the town $50,000 to do the re...
So that's why I'm going to...
So we need to set to 10, because everyone uses the reserve.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else have any discussion? So we have a motion and a second on that. Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Life insurance changed.
Were you looking at finance right now?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is that all the answers, or...
No.
No, no, no. Fight it, but then you have to say it before you put it... $82.56?
Yes. The new total will be $582,189.70.
Okay. For finance, the Budget Committee originally had $582,000, went to $25,530, which also reflects the administrative budget. And now, the change to the life insurance, it is $582,189.73.
Mr. President, I make a motion for total finance of $582,189.73.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Tax assessment department changed on health, dental, medical reimbursement, and life insurance.
Can you give us the new number?
Sure. Health insurance of tax assessment is $7,670.29. And then there's the cold day, you can set a total. Never mind, back up. The total is $6,596.45. The net in dental is $244.34. Life insurance is $835.20. And the medical reimbursement and buyback is $2,750. Making the total for the tax assessment department Making the total for the tax assessment department $256,805.99.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the total tax assessment's budget as recommended by the Budget Committee with change of health and dental to a total amount of $256,805.99.
It's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. All right, total IT. The Budget Committee has a $81,552.63, which also reflects the Town Administrator's budget. We have a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion for total IT of $81,552.63.
That's a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. House?
I'd be on the same page for reserves. So on the reserves, we have 2019 CapEx reserves, IT equipment needs for, we have a balance of $1,830.48. 2019 reserves, IT equipment for a total of $13,204.19. And 2020 reserve for a total of $13,000. Is any of this earmarked or be using this for any projects or?
A little bit. The only project that we have pending is the internet over at the animal control shelter. And that came from what, $1,000. So that's really a lot that we would need to keep in the reserve. It's like a project.
If we kept like 10,000 in there?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, see, yeah. So we took about like $6,000 out of the IT line and used it from, I should pull up your third?
Yeah.
President?
Ms. House? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, well, we can amend the motion.
I'd like to amend the motion considering that we have reserves for IT that aren't going to be used. So if we leave a total of 10,000 in the reserves and take the difference of $6,000 and lower the IT budget by $6,000. So it would be $79,552.63.
I don't know where we're taking that from.
The question was services. Sorry, professional services.
That would go from 26,4, we would reduce it by 10,000 or 6,000?
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
So it would be like 20,400 for the vertical six.
And we'll back for the rest of the reserves.
Right.
Because that is a contract that we have with them.
Yeah, I just.
We know what the cost is with that.
Right. I just put it like as a negative, the C, and I just put it somewhere in the reserve. So it'll just take it from the total of $33,100, so we'll reduce this.
Okay.
Okay, and then so the total for the department with the new number will be $75,552.63. Five, five, two.
So you're going to make a motion to amend, to change the professional services to be 20,400? Who made, can we make a motion, okay, to change professional services to 20,400, a second?
I'm sorry, 33,100.
Yeah, because 26,4 is just for vertical six, managed services. So the total of the professional services is 39,100, right?
Right.
So we've got to minus 6,000 off that.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-three, one hundred. So it'd be 35,100.
So that brings the total of 79,550, Kelly?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Okay, Ms. Vadnez, I believe you made the motion, the original motion.
Yeah. Right now, we have a motion to amend the line item. We're not making that. We are making the changes that Mr. Asus was putting in there. I look at it as it's not even negotiable. We know what that number is, we just make that change. We vote on that number. We're actually changing a line item, she's made the motion, and I seconded that. To reduce that line item to 39,33. We vote on that, and then I'll amend the main motion.
Okay, so we have, we need a motion then to change 39,100 to 33,100. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to lower the professional services fee in IT from 39,100 down to 33,100. Six thousand of that coming from the reserves, which makes the total of the total IT of 75,552.63.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and further discussion. That was a second by Mr. Carvo. Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes.
Now, Mr. President, I would amend my motion to reflect the total IT be 75,552.63.
In the second amendment's motion. Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. Conservation Commission. The Budget Committee recommends $1,200, that reflects the Town Administrator's budget as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $1,200 for the Conservation Commission as recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second. Yes, okay, roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. Any second? Historic District Commission.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
Make a motion to approve the Budget Committee's recommendation for Historic District Commission of $5,000.
We have a motion and a second, then Ms. O'Hara, roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. Little Economic Development?
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
Make a motion to approve the Budget Committee's recommendation of $500 for the economic development.
Second. We have a second, Mr. Vadnez, roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. Juvenile hearing?
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the juvenile hearing vote as per the Budget Committee's recommendation of $3,744.20.
That's a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Just second by Ms. Vadnez. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. Okay, before we continue. Mr. Asus, at what point would I, would we add that line item? Would that be written here, written this area, in general area? Okay, so what I'm looking to do is, we have a newly formed art committee, and they have expenses. They have printing, they have framing, books, wire, all that different stuff. So they need a budget, but the budget would be no different than if somebody went to town, at the Town Hall was doing it anyway. So that stuff would, that expense would be incurred, whether we had an art committee or whether we did not. So I would like to see a line item specifically for the art committee, you can do that. And also, I would like to see a budget of $2,500 for supplies and what any necessities. Okay? Okay, so I'm making the motion then to create the line item for the art committee with a budget of $2,500. I'm making that motion. And we have a second, is there any discussion on this? Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. Where are we, juvenile here? Library?
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
Make a motion to approve the North Scoville Town Library budget as recommended by the Budget Committee in the amount of $460,929.
I think we have a second by Ms. Vadnez, roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes.
Mr. President, dispatch has a change, the next department for life insurance.
Okay, what do we got?
The new number is 1,252.80. Great total for the dispatch department is $279,399,000, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
Make a motion to approve the total dispatch budget as recommended by the Budget Committee with the amendment to the life insurance at total amount is $279,399.06.
Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes.
Mr. President, we have a change in the North Scoville Police Department. We, we have to add the stipends for the death program in the fleet of $15,000. So that makes the total salaries of $1,949,378.27. And we, we didn't share it, had some people married. Changed insurance. The new total is 329,1178. Dental is 15,410.07. And life insurance is 34,243.20. Making the new total for the police department of $4223,7.63.
Okay. Is there a motion with the changes of $4223? Mr. President? $423,000, go ahead.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total for the North Scoville Police Department with the Budget Committee's recommendation of $4,298,285. And then amended to reflect the changes in life insurance and health insurance to be a new number of $4,223,7.63.
Uh, discussion? Okay, I'd like to discuss something real quick. Do we have anything in here for body cameras? Because they're requesting $55,000 a week.
Show up in cap, Mr. President.
Okay.
But when we get there, it's actually the state's that they pick it up.
The state's going to pick up the body cameras. Okay, good news. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Well, we had, sorry. Yeah, it's in cap.
Okay.
You ever been in cap?
Capital is included in everybody.
Yeah, I know, but it's just, we had an altercation when we were reaching, we got this. The chief, when he started with the budget hearings, counsel outside of us, he, at that time, was pretty much predicting that we wouldn't have that. He was right. The $55,733 is going to pick up by the state.
Okay, now, that's for the initial cost, but then I would imagine that we're going to be bearing the cost of that.
Then I'm not sure, I'm not sure, if the chief's out there, I think we could ask him. That has to be, that has to not.
Hello? Chief Lafferty, are you out there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. A quick question. So the $55,000? That is just of the body cameras, that's not, that's just of the hardware itself, correct?
What it is, is a five-year plan that was developed by Axon, which is broken up, it's $55,793 for the first year, additional four years, it's something like $23,000. It's a moot issue at this point, because the state's going to fund a certain amount of money at a minimum for a certain amount of departments based on data storage, based on the amount of officers on the department. So you could, I was speaking with the Town Administrator, either wipe that right out of the capital budget or save a little bit, because there's still going to be maybe some storage fees that may be attached to, because it's like, it's like an iceberg. The cost of the cameras and the material is the tip, but then you have to pay for cloud storage and, you know, depending on what they have for a service contract for the cameras. I don't know at what extent the state's going to just give a lump sum. So that was based upon the town getting $0. Myself, as a captain, I started this three years ago, fact-finding with Axon on what the estimated cost of cameras, 100% warranted with battery backup, 100% warranted if they broke, a certain amount of data per officer. So that's that, that's what that, that cost includes.
I'm just curious, that related to budget, though, what kind of timeline are you looking at before everybody's booked with a camera?
No one knows that. We, I have wheels process now of accepting, first you have to accept the policy for the camera, then you have to choose a camera to purchase, then you have to have training, then you have to have a go-date, making sure everyone understands the policy. We may have a program that will implement the cameras on a trial basis to see, you know, how it works. Probably a year to a year and a half process to get them up and going. That's what, that's just, you know, the professional people that I've talked to and listened to for like Rhode Island State Police, East Providence Police, different departments that have, that have been having programs and trying to implement them. And some have implemented them already.
All right, thank you.
So it's, it's going to be at least minimum a year-long process.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have any questions to the chief? Okay, so we do have a motion on the, on the, on the new number, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second?
Yes.
And the further discussion. Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes.
Mr. President, we did change on life insurance for the animal control department. The new number is $479.16. Total for the department is $155,478.31.
Four seventy, it was something, yeah?
I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the total animal control budget in the amount of $155,464.51 as per the Budget Committee with changes in life, health, and dental. The new number is $155,478.31.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad.
Yes. EMA. You get $38,269.14, and that also reflects the Administrator's budget as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total EMA budget of $38,269.14. Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total EMA budget of $38,269.14.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just discussing under capital and earth ground for radio equipment, $2,900. We're just wondering why we need to have that earth ground. We put in this antenna for them. That antenna is grounded. So I'm curious to see what we need to ground for everything is with that antenna. Meanwhile, it may not be at this time, but it will be.
That's right.
I'm wondering why we need to, why we need to do another grounding. That antenna is grounded.
CJ, is this Brad Coney on?
I did not see his name, but.
Have Mr. Olga.
I see the mother's name.
Mr. Brad Coney, are you welcome? Okay, he's not there. Well, you would know, I mean, you were on the building committee.
This building has lightning protection. That antenna is fully grounded. Yeah, you put antenna is fully grounded. So I don't, I'm just, I was, it may be something. I mean, I'm not a radio guy. There may be something to it, but I'm just questioning why we need that based on my limited knowledge that everything is grounded in lightning protection.
Well, maybe we could take the $2900, put it contingency if they have a good reason why they don't need it, why they might need it, and give it back.
Yeah.
You do that, right?
We also have $5,700 reserves.
And we must take that $29,000 right off the table then.
Vice President is looking at right now as we speak.
And they have, and they have a lot of great money that we don't even see.
So, I mean, but they give the reserves.
It's $5,500, $5,547.46 reserves. So we just take out that $2,900, and if they need it, there's $5,500.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a motion over.
That's reasonable. Is the motion to reduce that line item to zero?
A motion to, I'd like to make a motion to amend the line item for earth ground for radio equipment in the EMA from $2,900 down to zero and use any reserve money that may be necessary of the $5,547 reserves.
That's a motion with a second? Second by Mr. Carver? Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes. Can you give us a second?
Yes.
So I'll amend my motion then to reflect the EMA of $35,391. $369, correct?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? I'd like to just point out that only because we have some committee members that council members that sit at committees, we even know about this, right? I mean, I didn't know why. And who would have picked up on that? You know what I mean? Because who else would have known that it was already grounded? That's a good pickup. Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Nelson Field Fire Department. We have the $3,320,594.96, which is reflects the administrative budget as well. We have a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total budget for Nelson Field Fire Rescue Service in the amount of $3,320,594.96.
I'm going to, I'm supposed to discuss on this one. Mr. Zelinski. He'll be over here, but here we go. We, the fire department was able to get a significant amount of money for PPP on PPP forgiven loan. Okay?
$443,000.
$443,000. Mr. Zelinski and I met with the fire department, with the chief, and with the board, and they have, they have a shortfall in their budget that they're trying to make up for. And I understand that, I understand that. But what we asked them to do was to at least help us out on, to some degree, on what they could do for us, for the town, since they've received such a large amount of money. And although that money technically has to go towards payroll, it frees up the money that the town is giving them for payroll. So we asked them to help us out a little bit. And during that meeting, if you look at the generators, where are we? Where's the generators?
At the cap.
At the 48,000.
$48,000. And what we agreed on was that they would cover the cost of the generators, so $48,000. All right, chief?
I had to go to 48, it was 50 and mine.
Yes, 50 and mine too.
No, Cynthia, it was transposition when it was, it's $2,000 less. It's all you.
Chief Shaw, are you with us? Is the chief with us?
Yes.
Chief, did you?
Yes, I am, Mr. President.
We did have this agreement, right, with the, with the generators?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
We did have an agreement, am I correct? That you guys would cover the cost of the generators as something, as like a give back to the town for the, you know, for the windfall that you guys got?
Hello?
Chief, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? I can hear you, John. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. It's my recollection that the meeting ended as a potential, that would be something that we would look at in capital expenditures, but at that time, no one knew what the status of the PPP forgiveness was going to be. So it's my recollection, there was nothing solid. We talked about a lot of capital expenditures that I had had and that there would be, you know, something that would be discussed once the PPP was forgiven. Obviously, it has been. It has, and I'm sure the board is willing to sit down and begin those talks again.
So just, just to clarify then, so you're saying that there was technically, that we did not have an agreement? Because I kind, I kind of remember that we, that we that we discussed this, but if you're saying that it was contingent upon the loan being forgiven, and then we would sit down and discuss again, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying. We discussed options and possibilities. I know you had mentioned something about a fence around the volleyball court at one point. Then we let into capital expenditures, and then I, you know, gave you a list of things that I would be putting in for. But we all agreed that there was nothing that could be done at that point because we had no idea if it was going to be forgiven or how it's even going to be able to be spent. So we agreed that at that point, we would reconvene when it becomes forgiven, if it had been forgiven, which it has. And I'm sure the board is willing to sit down and have a discussion as to what action is going to be taken next.
Mr. President, if I may suggest to the council that we could take that $48,000, put it into a contingency to the fire department board meeting. We got definitive of federal money versus town money. This can get a little tricky, but if the council would consider putting that $48,000 contingency, it looks mighty good to help us solve the budget problem.
And then we'll have to set up, I would like to set up a meeting as soon as possible. And we can ask one other member of the council to join us. Chief, is that, I'd like to, I'd like to set up a meeting as soon as possible with you on the board?
Absolutely, I can try to start working on that tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I ask a question of the administration about possibly using Fund 20 money on that third-party building. I was told it could be, but we're drawing quite a bit on that, and I understand that. We're putting money aside for two rescues and two pumpers on a regular basis so that when we need them, we have the money there, everything. We look at the total, that's $290 that we're usually putting aside in capital for vehicles, for the fire rescue service. And we put $260 to an operational budget out of that third-party building. But I know that that third-party building is generating far excess of $550,000. The last time when I was on the Budget Committee, we were generating close to $700,000 a year. And so I'm just wondering if, that's the other thing that we look at taking is that that comes out of Fund 20 as opposed to the operational money.
Yeah, but I was looking at it more like.
You're looking at it not even paying for any of it.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, technically, they're buildings, and it's our equipment in it. So we could get, like the administrator was saying, it's a, it can be a slippery slope if you try to walk this thing in.
My understanding is that Fund 20 was set up for tappets, strictly limited to tappets, whether it be what we call flying trucks, pumpers, or emergency rescue vehicles. To start going in and look at some of these other capital items like a generator and stuff.
We've done a roof. Town has done a roof on the fire.
I think we've also, I think we've also enlarged garage doors to fit the size of a bumper.
Yeah, that's why I asked. It was, well, it could be, and it's, like you say, it's a, it's kind of rare, isn't it? Because it's housing, it's housing the trucks, it's the services. It's just, I asked a question about it, and we're discussing that one, so I put it out there. I'm okay, you want to try and put in the contingency in hope that we don't, we don't need it there, and we get it? Come to an agreement with the fire rescue service?
That would be my suggestion, Mr. Vadnese, but the $48,000 contingency.
Okay, so I'm going to, okay. I'm going to make a motion that we, that we remove $48,000 from the capital line item for Nelson Field Fire Rescue Service to be we get $5,000 in capital, be a $5,000.
So the, you're removing the $48,000?
Correct.
Okay. So the new number then would be $3,270,594.69.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. President?
If we remove the $48,000?
Yeah.
This $3,272 will be $5,943.6.
I'm making a motion to change that line, the line item to capital to $5,000, a reduction of $48,000. And then we'll amend the main motion again.
Okay, that's a motion with a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carver?
Can I ask? Can I ask a question, Mr. President?
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Hello?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would amend my motion to reflect the new number of $3,272,594.96.
That's more, who made the second on that one? Who made the motion?
I called the second.
The second, okay.
I made the second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. President, building and zoning, the next department has life insurance change. We've changed to $935.20. The new total for the department is $214,384.85.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the $214,334.85. As amended?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total building and zoning Budget Committee's number of $214,357.25 and amended to reflect increases to life insurance. So the new number would be $214,384.85.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry. There's a change with PPW Medical. The new number is $6,596.45. And the medical reimbursement and buyback has changed also to $250, and the life insurance to $417.60. Making the new total for the PPW department of $139,545.98.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I can use myself on this line item, please.
So we have a motion to approve the amended amount of $139,545.19?
Mr. President, I make a motion for the total for PPW Director in the amount of Budget Committee's number of $150,105.71 and amended to reflect the changes in life insurance, health insurance, and buyback to be $139,545.98.
That's a motion, we have a second? Second by Mr. Carver? Roll call please.
Ms. House? Sorry, Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. President?
It's okay.
I would like the chief. Need to change our medical, medical for the highway department. The new medical amount is $200,134.14. Dental is $9,265.52. And life insurance is $6,264. The new total for the PPW department is, I'm sorry, for highway,
We have a motion to the amended amount?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total highway budget, Budget Committee's recommendation, $3,383,653.6 and amended to reflect changes in life insurance, health insurance, et cetera, to be $330,297.11.
Second, discussion please?
Under discussion. Under the capital, it's not capital, on the road repairs for highway department, we had budgeted, it's recommended that we budget $550,000. I want to make a motion that we increase that number to be $600,000, which would be level funded from the previous year. We already, the previous administrator recommended that, but I was looking at it anyways. This is something that past committees, past councils have moved forward with, looking at it and funding it to a certain level, looking to increase it, and I'm not saying we can increase it, but I think we need to at least level fund it from the previous year, even though we haven't spent the previous year's money because of COVID and whatnot, where everything was on hold. By the time we released all those funds, it really couldn't be done. But we still need to do those roads, so in theory, you double up and get more road done. The money didn't go away, and I'm not saying not to fund it. We need to make that commitment on a yearly basis to fund a certain level to continue to do street work or increase it. So my recommendation this year is at least to level fund it, so it's an increase of $50,000 on that line item.
I honestly, I would tend to agree. I think roads become the quality of life issue in town. And it's very frustrating when you're driving around and you hit bad roads all the time. Mr. Penegas, we have Mr. Penegas in the audience. Is that something that you, that we, if we, how much, how much roads could we get done this year? How many, what would be the process if we? How many, what would be the process if we did increase that amount? And then what would be the process and how with getting the roads done?
Well, we have to go out, we've got to get it. But certainly $50,000 will help us. So we get a decent amount of road, we're putting, filing a list right now. At least get the process moving. So whether we get $50,000 or not, the process is going to continue when we have a list of roads there.
You're identifying roads that you want to get paid, and you have in the neighborhood of $1.2 million to do that?
We've been identifying, so we have a list.
And there are plenty of roads that need to be done?
Plenty of roads.
All of them.
I've worked through that. If that's a discussion that we have to have, we will. That's all of it.
All of it, right.
Like all of it.
All of the different discussions.
But yes, we have plenty of roads. But we also have the luxury of the new, the new law. And whenever any utilities dig into our roads, they have to pay a certain amount of money towards our roads. So I've issued several domestic risks, gas, and that'll help us also on the way down the road.
So instead of just getting a four foot wide strip going up middle of your road, you get the whole road done?
Correct. They dig in the middle, it's curb to curb.
Okay.
So, and in some cases in the past, they've been on one side of the road. So they will tell us, hey, for a little, say, $2,000, $1,000, you can get the whole road done. They have to be paid there. So if that's another area of plenty I want to identify, so that when that brick falls, we're ready to move on that. But that'll help us along with a lot of roads that we've been speaking about.
Yeah, Mr. Penegas, we're following up on this, and there are a lot of roads. To, we have limited to say, it's going to be substantial, certain neighborhoods, going to have pretty much most of their roads replaced. But I just hope that people stop calling town hall, saying, is it my road, is it my road? We told us it's complete, we get that. It's, Mr. Penegas has done a great job coordinating this.
So I guess what I'm asking is if we add the 50, we could use it.
Absolutely.
What?
Absolutely.
We got $150,000, we could use it. But I can't go down.
No, that would certainly be good.
That was a motion. Well, we'll tie that.
We do. So I forgot, we do have, we have like $338,000 reserves too, so there is money out there that we. That must be, I don't know, right now it shows that we only spent $26,000 this year.
Yeah, there's $575,000 left over from this year's budget agreement right now. That's what I was saying, you would be able to double up on it, but.
Right, so now you'd be, now you'd be.
Well, the luxury of that, as Councilor had said, if you get $600,000 every year, and you can do this every day, you're really only getting a few roads. I think we're over a million with, depending on what we have this year. And that kind of puts us in the area of when you did the $25 million bond a few years ago. We just did $1 million smaller roads, so we will get over $1 million with the road, which we got.
Some of that reserve is left over from other projects that we did, the weather changed or whatever.
Right.
And so we could, we could use that going forward and just get more road done. And the price of, price of asphalt isn't going down right now.
So that, that number is always been in the back of my mind, to use that so that we can go out and really tackle what it is.
Mr. Mano, if any time would be? Okay, thank you. All right, so I made the, Mr. Baddeys made the motion to increase the 50, increase an additional $50,000. I made a second. Is there any further discussion? Roco, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Baddeys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes. Mr. President, this time I would have meant my motion to approve the total highway department budget to be $3,382,297.
That's a motion. Who made the second on that one?
Claire.
Claire? You second that?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Roco, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Baddeys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
The President, Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
The Parks and Rec to change the life insurance to $835.20. Making the new total for the Parks and Rec department of $241,255.31.
I'm sorry, can you give that number again? Okay, we have a motion to approve the amended amount of $241,255.31. We have a motion. Second, is there discussion? Second, is there discussion? Roco, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Baddeys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Debt service, probably not what we can do with this one. Budget committee's recommendation of $4,166,886,99 cents is reflected in the town administration budget as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion for your proof total debt service in the amount of $4,166,886,99 cents.
Any discussion? Roco.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Baddeys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
We're looking at total general government. We have a budget committee recommendation of $1,616,28, which does differ from the town administrator's budget
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve total general government of $1,63,116,28.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Under discussion. Fund balance restoration slash contingency. The budget committee had zero in that. The administrator had $61,000 in that. I was going to recommend that we level fund it at $100,000. But in the discussion that we've just been having, we've added, we've talked about adding some funds to that, the $48,000 for the, the generators. And I think that was what we talked about. So it would be $148,000 on the fund balance restoration contingency. The budget committee has zero with that. I don't agree with that. We need to have some contingency, we can't, we can't run it, so. We had $100,000 in there in previous years. And then either that, last year we really juggled it around to try to work with COVID. If the administrator remembers, Mr. O'Hara remembers, we had quite a discussion going on on that one to get it up. And then we, we went back and corrected it also. I would make a motion that we, that we, that we put that number at $148,000.
Are we doubling, are we doubling up on the $48,000 though? Because we already moved that $48,000 one time, right? We took it up, we put it in the contingency.
We talked about putting in contingency, this is where we would do it now.
Okay.
So what, my originally, I was going to look at making that $100,000, but now we're going to add the $48,000 contingency to it. So we would be at $148,000.
Okay.
So why the administration's not? $140,000.
Does anybody else have any discussion on this? All right, so the motion that we have before us and Mr. Baddeys' request is, his motion is to make the contingency line item $148,000. Do we have a second on that? I'm going to second the discussion. I'm just, I'm just a little lost here. If, so we, we took the $48,000 of the generators and what of, what I? I just didn't want the 40, I, the $48,000, we might have to go back to it, right? And then depending on what we discussed with the fire department, that may end up having to go back to the fire department.
Correct.
Okay. So. At which point we would go back in and, and, and change that contingency account? To move that money back into the fire department cap? Right, but that money, if we just took it off the top, then it's that much less money than we are setting taxes on. Right? That's.
But if we take it out and then you want to do the battle, we get it.
Right.
That's all it's doing.
That's why I say that that line item is fund balance restoration slash contingency. If we don't spend it, it builds the fund balance. And that goes back to the policy that was set two councils ago, where they wanted a certain level of fund balance. If we increase our spending, we need to make sure that we increase our, our fund balance or the number will automatically drop down. If we don't add something, and it, and this gives us that wiggle room by adding contingency, something comes up that we need money for. We have it, and if we don't, we save it, and it, and it keeps that number in that 14% to 16% range that was the target that was set.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm thinking that we would. You follow what I'm saying? I'm thinking that we would just do the $100,000 contingency. And that $48,000 would just come up, would just come off the top of the total at the end of the day. That's, that's, that's just what I'm.
Yeah, because we don't know if that's going to go back, so we choose a hundred thousand straight. If we do lose that $48,000, we're going to be more in line with the administrator's budget, a little bit less than that. But at least we're not doing $148,000, because what if that goes away? Then we have $150,000 in contingency, which I own.
Oh, that's fine. My originally was at $100,000, but we discussed that we were going to cut that out and throw it in contingency, so. We can. I'm okay with leaving the contingency at $100,000.
Okay.
So it gives us.
Mr. Mosky, do you want to add to that?
No, I'm comfortable. I mean, if you look at the other way, that $39,000 or if you want to $100,000. So right now the contingency, what I, uh, proposal, $61,000 budget committee said zero. Uh, but if you wanted to take that 48 from the, from the generators and put it into that, you'd be, you'd be putting total $39,000, not 48, if you go to $100,000. Which is not that I can. I would, I would go on my motion.
Okay.
At $148,000.
Okay.
If you made it $100,000, you'd have $39,000, $48,000, in case we needed the generator closer. Well, certainly, I'm sure that we'd be, depending on the price of generators, when we go off the bid, I'm sure it'd be more attainable goal than we got to find one still.
And it's going to be some give and take with the, what we're talking about, all right? All right, so we withdrew the motion. Second, does the second draw? Was there a second?
You did.
You did second for discussion.
Second, yeah, second for discussion. So I'll withdraw my second.
And I will make a new motion that we, that we put the fund balance restoration slash contingency at $100,000.
And we have a second. Further discussion? I, I just don't want to tax people and then just have to do nothing, to have to sit there, do nothing. Okay, we have a second. Ms. O'Hara seconded. Roco, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Baddeys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. President, can I just go back? I missed. I want to have a question on.
Is it under this total government?
No, can I go back?
Actually, wait, can we wait till we just finish this one? Then we'll go back? All right, so is there any other changes that anybody would like to discuss on the total government, total general government?
Mr. President, I'd like to look at the Obed Trust contribution. I'm just kind of going back to the, the resurfacing issue where previous councils have made a commitment to fund that $250,000 to get to a certain level over the course of 20 years, to get to a level where it would be so-called self-sustaining. I don't see why we should decrease it. The fund needs, we need to, we need to put those funds in there. And I'll be honest with you, 10 years ago, when Obed first came out and I was sitting on the budget committee, I didn't really like it and I didn't totally understand it. And I said, we fully fund our retirees. We fund them in the budget every year. People that are retired, we fund them, we, we put all of that money into the one budget every year. But then in talking with people from the trust and the finance directors, this is something that you need to put in there. It's not something that we want to do, it's something that we kind of need to do. We're kind of forced to put money into this account, build up funds, so that should the town ever cease to exist, you can see that happening, there will be funds to pay for all of these retired people. And that, and it doesn't, it doesn't impact most of it, because like I said, we've been funding it all along. But the state has a, has a way of making laws that one size fits all. Because they're trying to fix the tuckets in the providences and the monsoics and general fault and something like that. Usually they're not funding until we refund it.
Can you do me a favor? Can you, and I, I know what it is, but just so people are saying, can you explain all that?
Open this for post-employment benefits. And so we are contracted with different people and they get post-employment benefits such as healthcare, dental, in some cases, life insurance. And so between the trust and when they have the audit done, they actually do a calculation to show what we have liabilities. All these people that are retired, and they make a sub, certain assumptions that you have to make. You know, they've so long and you have to pay so much, and it carries out, like Mr. Carver can understand that, that's what he does. And so they want all these communities to show that. And so we have an unfunded liability somewhere in the range of like $8 million if they calculated the fight relief right from the front of the order. And so we're trying to get to a number like $5 million. So that it, it's in an account and it earns interest. And the state did they manage it, correct? So the Obed is in an account that earns interest?
Yes.
And so.
And it's in the trust.
So they're trying to get to a certain level where it would kind of like be self-sustaining. And so commitment that was made four years ago or five years ago was $250 was the number that we would try to get to. So that's why I say we need to level fund that now. Once you make the commitment, it's hard to go back. You can go back, but we can put zeros if we really want to. But it takes longer to get to that point. And so when you make a commitment, and this is one of those line items, and I think you need to follow that commitment. You need to make a commitment saying, yeah, we're going to at least put $250 into that account every year.
Mr. Baddeys is not far away from stuff funding.
Oh. Well, I believe he's almost 60,000.
Do we know how many people are coming on and coming off? Do we know that percentage? Well, do we know how many, do we know how many people are, are?
Retirees, the statutory report?
Right.
Off the top of my head, I don't have that. But I've been sending back some early, important government of the year. Yeah, half the people that are retired, that are on the plane right now, people, you know, they, they keep these chapters, you know, all time, you know.
Because I, I think that, well, I think that would give us a good idea, as what Councilman Baddeys said was, it'll give us an idea of who's coming, of who's going to be entering. Obed and who is going to be coming off, and those that are, you know, essentially deceased.
Right, this calculation at the hour does have to predict that.
Correct.
Um, you know, we have, or mostly the police officers that really, um, I would say probably 12 million of the six is the police officers because of their contract. Because most of them retire halfway each.
Right.
Um, before they're even out of the Medicare. So we have to pass them on insurance until they're in Medicare. And after that, we have to supply, not go to their family. So, um, that's what we thought of it.
In the trust right now, we have, don't quote me on this, but it's around like 1.4 million right now, that's in it.
That's it?
Yes, that's it. We've only been contributing. We've only been contributing since I started here, and I've only been here four years.
And at the beginning of COVID, for a couple of months, we saw some big loss. It's since recovered, but it's, it's kind of stagnant for a bit.
And believe it or not, they don't look at how much we contribute every year. And that really does do a big factor in determining our liability. When they, the actual election was one of us, they suggested that we do a policy. When they, the actual election was one of us, um, they suggested that we do a policy of how much we're going to put in here because that would help us win the liability on our value sheets.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion that we increase that line item by a hundred thousand dollars to be two hundred fifty thousand dollars. As it was in the previous year. And I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, uh, Roqueau place. Uh, this is a Roqueau. I had, I changed the number of, for one hundred fifty thousand dollars on the Obed trust contribution to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's the motion. We have motion and second on that. Roqueau place.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
The Bureau of.
Yes.
So Cynthia, can you put that in then and tell us what we did here?
We increased that line item by two hundred thousand dollars, correct? The total of them.
One hundred.
We had a hundred for the contingency.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, okay.
So that's what I'm talking about. If there's no other changes.
I do total.
So I made, I would amend my motion to be, the total general government to be one million, two hundred sixty three thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars and thirty eight cents.
Twenty eight cents, I'm sorry.
Twenty eight cents, yes.
Second.
We have motion and second. Is there further discussion? Roqueau place.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
The Bureau of.
Yes.
Ms. South, do you want to go back to something?
I did. I'm going to go back to the highway.
Ms. Denise?
Well. So I just have a question regarding that, the motion, open it back up.
Uh, no, you can just discuss it. No, you can make your motion.
All right, so tree maintenance, I just have a question on that. I forgot to mention that. So we have fifty thousand for the budget committee, uh, town administrator and the department head, but I'm just looking at previous years, we've, um, this year so far, I don't know if we have any more expenses, but we're at thirty thousand. Last year we did thirty thousand, we ended up at ten thousand five. So I'm just wondering if we still need fifty thousand here because right now we would still have twenty thousand from last year's budget.
Which line item is this?
Uh, tree maintenance.
Right, we wouldn't reserve that money.
Right, so I'm just wondering if we can save a little money in this line item.
That might be a great question. I mean, you asked us to reserve, what we have it needs this year.
Uh, and, and the reason that twenty thousand was not spent this year was that we tried to hold ten to twenty thousand, but the fifty thousand that we appropriated, the ten and twenty thousand, we tried to hold in spring for these spring storms and trees and so on. Fortunately, we didn't have any, uh, and I still could not get any work done because the tree companies collapsed right down. So, uh, I think, I understand what you're asking. You know, I can be the twenty thousand. If twenty thousand would be thirty, then it would be twenty for the rest, I guess.
Yeah, we better reserve the twenty, I haven't spent. This is twenty one. We'll reserve it and you can use it.
And if you want to reduce it to fifty and thirty, that's fine.
So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the total budget for, um, highway that we approved in the month of three million, three hundred eighty thousand, two hundred dollars and ninety seven cents.
Second then. Okay, uh, so, um, no, that, that's back, that's opened up? Roqueau place.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Bureau of.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to make the tree maintenance highway budget be twenty thousand dollars, I mean, yeah, twenty thousand dollars, which would lower the department's request, the department's budget to three million, three hundred fifty thousand, sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety seven.
That's a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Roqueau place.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
The Bureau of.
Yes.
Mr. President, on the school department, I'm just saying there's a change to the group home and the high cost special ed in the state aid, which is basically the past, we can see it in revenue itself. So the change is ninety six thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars for group home and fifty two thousand, three hundred eighty five thousand for the high cost special ed.
Okay, so what does that bring us?
Um, it would be totals twenty seven million, three hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred and ninety three.
And that's off of the budget committee's budget?
Yes.
Okay, uh, for the school, for the school now. Is there a motion to throw in the twenty seven million, three hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars? As amended?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the total school budget of the budget committee's recommendation, twenty seven thousand, four hundred eight thousand.
Twenty seven million.
Twenty seven million, four hundred eight thousand, nine hundred and forty nine dollars. And amend that to reflect a reduction in state aid in group home and high cost special ed for a new number of twenty seven million, three hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Under discussion.
Mr. Vadnese.
Town appropriation. Budget committee is recommending level funded. Same level as, what was in last year's budget. I don't believe that's a wise move. Their cost increase just as ours do, um, some of the rationale that they were using for that was that they had a large fund balance this year. Um, and most of us know if you use a fund balance to try to balance an operational budget, creates a structural deficit, it's not recurring money. And they, and they referenced the larger amount of federal funds that they had from stimulus money that the government put into different things. Which is restricted, we, and it's, it's no different than Title I money that, that the school gets, federal funds that you can't touch, you can't supplant. I mean, you can't, um, replace programs, you can only, you can only supplement them with that money. I know the administrator had, had a number that was about one and a half percent. We did have a meeting during the budget hearing. We did, we did listen to the school committee. And, and just like us, they had cost increase from what their original request was of, um, six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. It went up to about eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, at this time, I, I make a recommendation that the local appropriation be twenty one million, one hundred and one thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars, which is approximately, which is a four hundred thousand dollar increase to what the budget committee was recommending. It's actually a little bit more than what the administrator was recommending as well.
Okay. Uh, I, I also, I tend to agree with that. I think that the, uh, quality of the schools is directly related to the quality of the town and the value of your properties. We can't let the schools, uh, the schools are doing very good. It'd be great to see them do, you know, maybe they could even do better. Not knocking them by any means, but I'm just saying, you know, maybe there's even room for improvement and I don't want to see it go the other way. So I, I, I would tend to agree with that, Ms. Vadnese.
That was a motion that I made to increase it.
Yeah, I'll keep that.
Yes, please. Oh, well, you know what I'm going to do though? Well, again, while you made the motion, we'll go second for discussion. I, I jumped a gun a little bit, so, uh, I will, I will second half of discussion. So, go ahead.
I can look back more than thirty years on the system. I've seen it at its best. I've seen it decline. And I can say honestly, within the last five years or so with this new, um, facilities, there's been a tremendous positive change in the buildings and the staff. So, um, they're going in the right direction. And you know, it's nice to follow the right direction, but unless we, we provide them with means, we'll stop plugging backwards again and we can't do that. Anyway.
Just so, just so everyone is aware as well. And, and Mrs. O'Hara is, is right. The schools haven't looked this good in a long, long time.
A long time.
There's a reason for that, Mrs. O'Hara. When the state would end some of this, the new housing aid formulas and stuff, warm state drive with the forty percent reimbursement. There were strings attached to that. They're not bad strings, but there were strings attached to that that says, school department cannot go backwards in their funding for maintenance of their buildings. They have to increase it. It has to increase like the level of their budget costs. So that's another reason why I say that we can't just level fund them. Because now, now you're going to cut into programs because they need to increase their maintenance funding. It is by law. It's part of their reimbursement process and we lose that forty percent reimbursement. And so they are doing a great job up there. They're doing a good job educationally. They're doing a good job with facilities. I, you know.
I think it's the key method, which is one.
Level funding the school department. They did it two years ago and it comes back to bite you. It really does. It comes back to bite you when you level fund them. Because eventually it catches up. Their costs don't stay static, just like our costs don't stay static. We'll, we'll be discussing it in the next month or so. They have a teacher contract. That's a whole different issue, but.
Well, I, I'm concerned that if we build up level funding, the next year they could be coming to us with even more than the capitals.
That's, that's what you're running through. If you run up their cost, firing speed, what you can't act immediately, so. And that does do damage.
Uh, Ms. Lombardi, are you on with us right now? I'm sorry.
I am. I am. Can you hear me?
I'm going to try that again. Ms. Lombardi, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't know if you heard the discussion just now. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I, I would be very appreciative, uh, well, the, the school committee and the school department and the kids would be very appreciative if that's something you can do. Um, I think it keeps us at status quo. We're happy with that. And, you know, we move to next year. Obviously, we do have some federal funds. We'll be doing additional programs, but this keeps us at, at the ground level this year, next year, and then the following year. So it, it's not like it's this year and then we got a hole in the budget for next year and have to make substantial cuts. Um, this is the most responsible way I think we can go forward and I appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Lombardi? Uh, so this only, so we've kind of just stuck at, at status quo, like can we, uh, is there a plan to go, and I, I brought this up last time, but to, to go beyond status quo to, for instance, maybe languages in the middle school or, or programs for the kids that don't, don't have plans to go to college or?
Yeah, I, I believe the superintendent, um, at least spoke about the kids that didn't go to college. They were looking at, um, uh, some, a, a program, uh, for more of a skills class versus a, uh, uh, you know, college prep class. Um, I know that there are, so if I recall, and I'm only going off the top of my head, superintendent's on, um, the Zoom call as well. The, um, I don't think that middle school languages work because of scheduling. I believe that the superintendent is working on scheduling so that if that's a possibility in a year or two, um, that's something that we are looking at.
Thank you.
And that's not, that would not even be a big cost. I believe that we would be able to share it um, either with the high school or that it would be a class, you know, it'd be one more teacher for the year or, or something um, similar to that. But it's not a huge cost to add that. It's just that we have to be able to fit the class in with our schedule that we have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Lombardi? Thank you, Ms. Lombardi.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Vadnese and a second. For the additional, uh, to add the four hundred thousand dollars to the budget committee's budget. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, uh, Roqueau place.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Bureau of.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion on that budget?
I'm sorry?
Is there any other discussion on that, on that budget? Because I have to amend the total again.
Yeah, we're going to, I was just about to go to that, go there right now, so we'll, uh, I will amend the, the original motion.
I would amend the original motion for the total school department budget to be twenty seven million, seven hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars.
Where was it?
Could you repeat that one, I was trying to, Ms. Vadnese?
Twenty seven million, seven hundred ninety two dollars, seven hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars.
Okay, I see it, okay. Okay, uh, that is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
The second. I assure you, this should make. Ms. O'Hara made the second. Am I original motion?
No, John did.
I did. Okay, then I'll second. Thank you. Okay, uh, Roqueau place.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnese?
Yes.
Bureau of.
Yes.
All right, so it doesn't fit its managers. Am I correct?
It's managers, yeah. Oh, definitely into a long time.
Is that how many working you have up there now?
Yes. You want to say that loud? It's from twenty, I mean, forty seven million, four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred sixty three dollars and seventeen cents.
Mr. President, at this time, I make a motion that we approve total fiscal year twenty twenty two budget of forty seven million, four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred sixty three dollars and seventeen cents.
Second, about a discussion?
We have a second discussion. Ms. South?
Cynthia, you just, I was sure that that new department of twenty five hundred isn't there?
She asked me the same thing. I did, I did add it. I'm going to show them.
For somebody who?
The twenty five hundred for the art committee. The art committee, so make sure it's not too old.
Yes, it is. It's highly new.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see it. Oh, it's obviously up there.
So that comes out to a, uh, what was that?
One, two, three, five.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, we have approved all the capital, um, with all the deposits and all the, all the deposits. But in the past, we always did that separately. So I have, um, given you all the capital budget separately, but they were all approved except for the ones that I'm. but they were all approved except for the ones that are coming from side funds. For instance, the police vehicle, there was a recommendation from the TA and the budget committee to fund one of the admin cars from Fund Twenty-four. Also, the fire and rescue department. There was two hundred and ninety thousand that was recommended to come from Fund Twenty. And because that was not part of the general fund, I'm asking the common house approval. I don't know how that's part.
Those two capital budget lines?
Those are the only two that were not approved during the regular expense budget. Because they're coming from a side fund and not from the general fund. So it's not coming from
And they don't talk about rational funds, it's a separate, it's
Fund Twenty-four is their police detail account. And Fund Twenty, for the fire department, is the third-party building, the rescue.
Mr. President, at this time I make a motion that we approve a separate capital budget under the police department for the administration vehicle, the amount of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars to come out of Fund Zero Two Four, which is the detail, police detail account. And for the postman for fire rescue service, coming out of Fund Zero Two Zero, the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
Second, we have a discussion. Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Gentlemen and ladies, for one last minute before I forget and before these two men leave, I have something to say to both of you, Amy. No, I have seen this town. And Mr. Vannay, did you, I see this gazebo at the top of the hill. Your men working, taking such pride, I see our citizens, and I wish I would have, maybe I would have seen you, and been proud of you more. Working in the woods, finding things that, that we can teach our children more about the earth and how it began. The workers are unbelievable. I look at them working at police stations, you know, the ground, the place, I can't say that a second time. They take such pride in their dwelling. Well, it makes it nice, you know, you have audience, a bead, appointments, and talk. They have a sense of respect. They can find their work. And for a long time, that was one. Trust me, I had talent cutting one, fixing classrooms, saving classrooms. More than one plumber that helped us out. And now, I think it's a sense of gratitude, or if any department can help another, it's been done, and it's not such one time. It's been growing and growing. So I really want to thank you, and I think that other people have noticed all this.
I appreciate that, and I thought it was my
Please do, because, and tell me if you're wrong. But they are. It's nice to think, with all the negativeism that's been vectoring dur, these last couple of years, we have a right to be proud of our town.
Shoot it back, son. That's a motion.
Did you say that's emotion or a motion?
That was very nice of you to say that, point that out.
Well, you always give a bad, we do. We try to, we try to be honest.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to water department.
Do you want to do revenue or question?
Sure. Okay. Now, would you like us to, for revenue, would you like us to go down by department or just go down to the file total? Because I don't think there's gonna be anything that's gonna change, wouldn't change anything above revenue.
We can, well.
All right, we'll just do it by unit department.
Just keep in mind that if you change anything below the form, you change my current tax year tax revenue. So you may want to improve that a little. The thirty-five million
Okay.
It's dependent on what you've changed in revenue and what you've changed in expenses that kind of backs into that number. Because that's the money that we need for the levy to be for us to run the town.
I understand. All right, we'll do this quick then. Prove it, is there a motion to approve thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Spohkorn, is there a motion to approve forty thousand dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Town clerk, is there a motion to approve three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars? Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Planning, ten thousand dollars, is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Carvo? Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Finance, twelve thousand dollars, is there a motion approved?
So.
Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Police, thirty-one thousand, motion approved? Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. O'Hara seconds, roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
General control, eleven hundred dollars, is there a motion? Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
EMA, nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, motion approved?
So.
Second, roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Building and zoning, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, motion approved?
So.
Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
So the total general government of three hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, fifty-seven cents. Motion approved?
So.
Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Total school, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion approved?
So.
Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys? Mr. Biragod?
Did Mr. Vannys say yes?
Oh, I didn't hear him name.
Oh, she said, she said, I'm sorry, yes.
I thought I said it, he was looking at me like, yeah, I said yes.
Okay, I was waiting for it.
Okay, total state aid of ten million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-six cents.
Um, yes, Mr. President?
Yes.
There's a change in that, if you look on the screen, the high-cost special ed and the group aid changed because it's a pass-through. Because we changed on the expenses from the state aid, we have to change it on the revenue to match. So these two numbers changed.
Okay, so it brings us to ten million, three seventy-two?
Three seventy-two, three twenty-six.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Alice, roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes, and I, Cynthia, you want us to go to total tax revenue now? You asked me to skip that?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah? Okay, total tax revenue of thirty-five thousand, no, excuse me, thirty-five million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So the president, that's a change?
Okay.
Because of all the changes?
Yeah.
The new amount, so the first one where it says current year taxes, is thirty-five million, one eighty-one, ninety-five, six point seven four, making the new total of tax revenue at thirty-five million, eight twenty-one, nine five six point seven four.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that number?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the total tax revenue of thirty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, seventy-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Alice, roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve a total revenue amount of forty-seven million, four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
Is that right? Okay.
Second.
Second, we have a second. Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Cynthia, can we go to the water now, is that all right?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the enterprise fund revenue budget for border department in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-nine cents.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the enterprise fund expenditure budget for border department fiscal year 2022 in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Okay, we have the enterprise fund revenue budget. Total total revenue of two million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, forty-five thousand, seventeen cents.
Mr. President?
Ms. Alice?
I'd like to approve the sewer department enterprise fund for a total revenue of two million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, seventy, forty-five dollars and seventeen cents.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the sewer department enterprise fund expenditure budget fiscal year 2022 in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, forty-five dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
We have a second, discussion. Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Mr. President, at this time I would request that we take a recess to allow the finance director to calculate the method of tax collecting.
Okay, we have a motion for a recess, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a short recess. We're ready to go? Okay, we're ready, okay, so last, last business that we have to do tonight is I will entertain a motion to approve the method of taxation in the amount presented of no more than thirty-three million, nine hundred, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eight, eight hundred and nine dollars?
Um, it's no less than thirty.
No less, no less than thirty-three million, nine hundred and thirteen dollars, and eight hundred and nine? And no more than thirty-three million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and nine, in the form attached. That is a motion. We have a second.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. South?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vannys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
I think that's it, right? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, do Mr. President?
Sorry, go ahead.
I just want to commend the budget committee, town council, finance department, every department in town. I believe this might be record time for a review of the budget and coming to a decision in one night. Record time, but done thoroughly, so I just want to compliment everybody on their work.
And could not have gone as smoothly having I had the budget committee and everybody still in their job.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. So now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.